I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for March 14th, 2012. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fadesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Fleet?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Anton?
Here.
And Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, if you would please all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you all standing, please, anybody that's going to give any testimony tonight either for or against any item on the agenda, you've got to be sworn in. So if you please raise your hand, doesn't hurt. There you go. I swear that any testimony I give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you, and I would ask that you silence any electronic devices. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of our February 8 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Staying.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, the minutes as published are hereby adopted. First item on the agenda, under new business, planning and zoning item 12-007, Karen McCurry regarding the property located at 318 North Washington Street for the following. A zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a new attached garage, which will encroach into the required side yard setback adjoining a street. The proposed side yard setback is approximately 23.5 feet, where 35 feet is required in the R3 single-family detached residence district. If you would please sign in. Under here.
Where's the sheet?
Oh, we don't have a sheet up there?
I have to sign my arm.
I'm sorry for that.
My name's Rick Wilkinson. I'm Karen McCurry's brother. They asked me to speak this evening. They're looking to build a garage onto the side of their house. The reason that they need a variance is the house is now nonconforming on that side because the setback was moved some years back. What they'd like to do is build the garage flush with the front of the existing house.
Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Okay, we'll close the public comment. First, I had a question raised to me this afternoon about a side yard setback since this was a corner lot. So Shannon, would you just talk to that issue?
Yeah, I believe the question was regarding, there's a special provision in the code where, I think it's substandard lots that were not created with our minimum requirements of 60 by 125, and in those cases, there is a provision that would allow for a 25-foot setback. However, that doesn't apply in this case. This is an oversized lot by our minimum requirements at 93, 98 by 148.
So it's quite a large lot, though?
Right.
Okay, does staff have anything else, then?
Just that the home was built prior to the current zoning regulations, which requires the deeper setback. The proposed garage is designed to match the house. It would be built flush with the porch, as the petitioner noted, so the nonconformity will match. And there are no other, no other regula, all of the other regulations in the district seem to have been met.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Pill, if you would.
Thank you. Currently, does the garage line up with the porch or the front of the house?
Currently, it, I'm sorry, is this, speaking to me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Currently, it doesn't line up with either one. It's a small block. There's no, actually, it has a flat roof on it.
Right.
But it's.
So the front of it doesn't line up more with the house?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Well, it's got auto focus.
And I saw from the write-up that we were provided that you're going to match the face of the house to the garage?
Yes, the whole style of the house on the garage, so that, you know, aesthetically, everything is conforming, you know, uniform, rather.
And will it continue to be a flat roof garage?
No, no, we're going to go with a 412 pitch.
Okay.
Pitch roof to match the pitch on the house. Shingle the same as the house, sided the same as the house. Currently, it's a cement block.
Are you the builder, by the way?
No, I'm just Karen's brother-in-law.
Okay, okay. And then how about the doors? Are those, what are those set to match to?
The doors, the main doors on the house will match the existing steel doors that are on the house, and then you'll have corresponding probably, you know, nine or 12 panel, aluminum door, you know, steel garage doors.
Okay. I like the idea, I like the drawings. I was out there today and took a look, and I think this is certainly an upgrade to the property, and I think that everybody in the neighborhood would like this also, and I think it's going to be beneficial for you as a family, folks living there and stuff. So I have, I would support this. No further questions.
Commissioner Anton?
I used to walk my dog past your house all the time, so I know exactly what you guys are going through, and I also still own that house on a corner, nonconforming, all that. So I think it's a good idea. I love garages, I love fences, just that guy, I guess. So unlike you, have a good, good building process. I hope it works out good, and I like that you're matching the look sound, make it look like it grew there. So, good, good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I think one of the questions that was asked, are you going to match the front of the house? And it's not. It's going to match the front of the porch.
Right.
So it'll actually be offset. In any event, a variance would be required because they're still in a setback. But they'll be coming up to where the steps and the porch is rather than running even with the house.
Correct.
The question that I would have, is this a three-car garage, it's a pretty big garage. Is there any problem with that? I know because it's attached, that gives it some.
Right. If this had been a detached garage, it could go up to 576 square feet, but because it's attached, there are no parameters to limit the size.
It's a nice-looking house, and it looks like you do a good job of keeping it well, and I'm sure this will be an asset for you, and I'm all for it.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yeah, I don't have any real issues with the garage. I think it's a nice addition. My only question is the driveway, because when you build a wider garage, you're going to have a wider driveway. There is a limit to the width in the code, and just, I wanted to make sure that you understood that the width, you know, it's going to have to flare, is what's going to happen.
Exactly what I was going to say is it will flare out, you know, so that they can use all three sections, but, you know, going down.
But it'll funnel down to the, to the maximum width allowed.
Maximum width, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, that you don't exceed that, and then come back and say, oh gee, we goofed, and we need another variance. So, okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, I like the, the look of the project. I like the, the use of three separate doors, and it gives you a nice width between, between vehicles for, for storage and whatever. Wish you luck on the project.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Roy, are you done?
Yes.
I apologize. Commissioner Thomas?
I like the look, look of it, and you're picking up a real nice garage, a nice, big, big chunk of garage, and it's not going to take away from the neighborhood, it's not going to take away from line of sight. You're good to go.
Thank you.
So I have.
And if I may, to Commissioner Fadesco's point, the minimum requirement for the driveway width is nine feet, the maximum is 22 feet. However, we do allow for a reasonable flare for access.
Right, at the curb and at the garage.
At the garage, right.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, are you done, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yes, when I was out there today at, I was looking at, thank goodness you're taking down that garage, that's all I can say.
It's a beauty.
Yes.
I think novelty is about the only thing that you could have fit in it. I think it's like 12-foot front to back.
And as the attorney was just telling me that, you know, you're way under, under the lot coverage, so you'd be good, and that's even with the white driveways and the fliter and everything. So that's all been considered. The only question I would have had is on your south elevation, what you show.
Mm-hmm.
You show the garage butting up to the existing porch right now.
Yes.
Deck, yes. I'm from UofC. If you were to move that garage back to the edge of the sliding glass doors, what would that footage, a comp, total out to?
As in making the garage bigger, or just pushing the garage back?
No, just if you were to push the garage back or something.
You can push the garage back, the problem becomes because the elevation of the garage, the floor level of the garage, is so much lower than the raised ranch floor level of the house. What you have is something similar to the existing condition, whereas the eve of the roof would be right in the middle of the sliding glass door. So you'd basically walk out your sliding glass door, and the eve of the roof would be waist-high right there.
Not a good thing.
No, plus it also cuts down and makes the, the existing deck less usable.
Okay.
You know, you've only got a small area left because of the shape of the lot.
Okay, that was the only thing that, it looks like you're really improving the property at, looks like you really cut down a great big tree there.
Oh, there were a couple.
There were a couple.
Yeah, there were, there are a lot of dead trees in the lot, unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you very much. Since we have a variance request, we need reading as to the findings of fact, if we could have that, please.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property's existing garage is unusable and requires replacement. The house and existing garage were built prior to the onset of current zoning regulations, and both encroach into the required side yard adjoining a street. The owner could not build a conforming attached garage, and a variance is necessary for the property to yield a reasonable return in this regard. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The existing location of the house prevents the construction of the conforming attached garage. Attempts to redesign the proposed garage to lessen the encroachment would unreasonably interfere with the existing deck and swimming pool. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed garage and resulting setback are consistent with improvements and setbacks of surrounding properties. The property will meet lot coverage requirements, and the proposed improvement will not adversely affect stormwater drainage. Accordingly, the proposed improvement will not alter the essential character of the locality.
If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance request are hereby adopted and approved. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under planning and zoning item 12-007, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a new attached garage, which will encroach into the required side yard setback.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fadesco. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, sir, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff can tell you when you'll go before the Board of Trustees for a committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Next item, planning, planning and zoning item 12-008, James Kahuli of Clover's Garden Center LLC with Suburbanite Bowl Incorporated regarding the property located at 251 West Ogden for the following. A special use permit renewal for a period of three years to allow for the continuation of an open sales lot in the B2 general business district.
I am Jim Kuhnle, and can't believe it's three years already.
It's been a while.
Time flies. We all look younger and thinner and happier, right? At least happier. So anyway, we're back here again, hoping that you will allow us to return to our happy home next to Suburbanite Bowl. It's been an interesting three years, certainly. Economy has been on the rocks, and we all know that, but the garden business is going strong, and it looks like we're going to get off to an early start this year at this June meeting. It feels like it. So it's pretty much, we're asking for three years again. The dates I requested are a little different. The old dates were March 15th through August 15th, and then we took a two-week break, and then came back September 1 through November 3 for the fall stuff. What I'm hoping to do is if we could begin March 15th and run it right through the fall, because the season just gets drawn out, and the big-box stores and all the other people are selling stuff, so they expect us to do that, too. And, you know, maybe if it's an early year like this, we wouldn't stay the whole time, we would still vacate and come back. We would love to have that flexibility, you know, if you would provide it to us. And then the Christmas time, that date, I put November 17th through December 26th, and that November 17th is early, you know, we're never going to get Christmas trees that early. But I was concerned about, especially this coming year, when Thanksgiving falls on pretty early, it's November 22nd. So we at least like to get up and have some wreaths and things like that, you know, that weekend before Christmas, so we can be there visible, and then we'll get our trees in fresh after Thanksgiving. So the setup would be pretty much the same in that paved area. They're going to make some improvements to the parking lot this coming year, we hope. Judy Anderson from the bowling alley was going to be here, but she's not, but there's some hot holes and things which are patched. It's much better now that it's paved. People aren't stepping in the gravel and all that stuff. But we continue to very much appreciate your having us in Westmont, and we feel as though we're part of your community, and, and it's just, I can't wait for spring.
Spring is here.
Spring is here.
Summers.
Summers.
Okay, any public comment? Hearing none. We'll close the public comment. Does staff have any?
Just a little bit of background, the petitioner has been requesting and has been approved for these special uses since 1999. The Christmas tree sales are allowed by right, but because it's an extended period, that's why it requires the special use. And the petitioner's also included a detailed map of the property for your use as well, to see where everything would be stored.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you would.
I'm glad you're here. Anything we can do to help you with the big boxes?
Thank you.
I support your date request.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, same. I've used, been to your facilities through several seasons, and always enjoy shopping there, and welcome back.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yeah, I echo my fellow commissioners. You have a good, nice, orderly, clean operation, and I think that bodes well for your business.
Thank you, we try to keep it so.
Hope your continuing success. So, no other questions or comments.
Get him.
Thank you.
That was Commissioner Van Buren. Commissioner Anton, welcome back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
Yeah, I would, I would echo the same comments. I've shopped there for years, both residentially and for our business, and I love the selection, and it's, it's just an orderly system over there, and I think the expanded timeframe is good for you guys. I, I also think these are the kind of things that sort of make a town a town. Every time I come over there, I always run into a neighbor, and the 15-minute run up there to get something turns into 30 minutes, 45 minutes, we're talking and stuff like that, and I just sort of personally enjoy that. So I'm glad to see you want to stay, I'm glad you're back, I'm glad you made it through the, whatever we had, recession, whatever it was, but let's hope we got brighter times for all of our businesses and things like that. I'm all for it.
Thank you, I appreciate those nice words.
And I would echo my fellow commissioners' sentiments at, very happy to hear you back. I've only heard good things about you, and you've always been neat and clean whenever I've stopped by, so very happy to see you back.
Thank you.
All right, since we have a special use request, we need readings of the findings of fact, if we could have that, please.
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The proposed open sales lot will be limited in duration and hours. No dangerous or hazardous materials or equipment will be displayed. This use has occurred on the property since at least 1999 without incident. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. This proposed use is consistent with other commercial uses in the immediate area and will not impair property values within the neighborhood. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The surrounding property is fully developed, and this proposed use will not impede any further development. Criteria number four, the adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. All needed utilities are already provided to this property. Criteria number five, the adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The property is already improved with sufficient ingress and egress to the public streets, and no new access points are required. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. No variations or waivers are sought in conjunction with this special use permit.
If you agree with these findings, please, okay, we are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact, that special use are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 12-008, a special use permit renewal for a period of three years to allow for the continuation of an open sales lot in the B2 general business district. So moved?
Second.
That's motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Mr. Fadesco?
Yes.
Mr. Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and you know how to go before the Board of Trustees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Planning and zoning item 12-009, Jeffrey Clay of K. Clay International Inc. regarding the property located at 203 North Cass Avenue for the following. A special use permit request to operate an office with associated retail and storage in the B1 limited business district.
Hello, my name's Jeff Clay, and I'm the owner of K. Clay International. We've been a business of downtown Westmont for over 30 years now, and we basically sell dance apparel. And the business was started by my mom many years ago. She passed away, and so I've been running it, and what we have is a fairly small retail shop, and we'd like to expand a little bit, and we also need a little bit more storage. So the building on 203 North Cass has come available, and so we would like to utilize that building for our retail store. Currently, it's not really quite set up for retail, but, you know, we believe that the front half of the building could actually be converted into a retail location with the back half being more office, and the garage part being storage, and also with the basement. So, you know, we have a few things going. I guess the building has been kind of in limbo as far as a fire alarm, so we were going to put a fire alarm system in the building to catch up with the codes on that. We also would like to do some remodeling, you know, it's kind of been sitting for about two years now. So there's some exterior paint problems that we'd like to address, and there's a stucco finish that needs some retouching, and maybe a little landscaping, too, you know, bushes are getting kind of big, so. And also, we'd like to put in some signage. We'd like to have a sign up on Cass Avenue and also on the other side, on Norfolk Avenue side, so we get a little bit more exposure where we're at currently now. You know, we're kind of tucked in a corner, and everybody zooms by us, and they don't know where we're at. So I think with this building, we'll have a little bit more ability to see our business. And also, we've got our own private parking lot, which I think is a plus. The other location, we're kind of sharing that with a bunch of tenants, and there's a beauty parlor there, so it squeezes down to maybe a couple spots over there, so, you know, most of our customers are, you know, we do have periods where they may come in all at one time, but I believe that for the most part, they just kind of trickle in time to time. And there is, appears to be a public parking lot down the street, you know, a couple hundred feet down, and we also got some street parking, so I think this should be okay for finding a parking spot. And I don't know if you've seen the plans of what we were going to do, or, I could put it up here. Everyone got a floor plan? Oh, you did, okay. Yep. Well, if you can see, see existing layout there, we're thinking mainly of making the front part the retail, and sort of the middle part is going to be our office section, and we're also going to use the basement mainly for storage. It's, in our business, it's, that's one of the problems is, is that you need a lot of shoes to fit people, so, you know, part of our thing is we've got to have a big stockroom, and, you know, we have two stores, so we kind of shuttle it around between the stores, but it'd be nice to have a central location where we could have most of our inventory stored. And plus, when fall time comes in, you know, we may actually fill up some area like the garage, which is 712 square feet, you know, we get maybe, you know, up to 150 boxes of shoes in. So it's a big shipment, and it all fills up in that little place, and, you know, it's hectic, you know. So, so we really need to expand a little bit, you know, and I have the option to get the building at this point, so. And also might be some future advantage to our business to actually own a building instead of renting, so.
Okay, you, just to clarify, I have one thing, sir, though. For signage?
Yes.
Nothing has been published at this meeting for signage, so.
Right.
What we're concerned is the special use, you'll have to talk to staff on that.
Yeah, I just was outlining what we'd probably do.
Okay, sure. They can tell you what's allowed and what you can apply for.
And we'd be happy to talk to you about our facade and development grant opportunity. That's a building that could use some street presence, so we'd like to work with you, if possible, towards that.
Okay, we could use some help there.
Okay, well, no public comments, seeing nobody's here. We'll close the public comments. Staff, do you have anything else?
Because the petitioner is requesting a combination of retail and office, he's requesting the special use, which allows office space to be considered as part of the building, and then retail is expected to take up most of the space eventually. And the petitioner has sufficient private parking, as well as the additional public parking, which he mentioned is readily available.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just one other comment. If you look at the storage, which could be also termed warehousing, it's a small percentage on the first floor, it appears. It'd be, what, 20 to 25% maybe? But then on the basement, it's a pretty significant portion. So when you look at the overall use of two floors, they do have a significant amount of storage, but I don't know what else the basement could really be used for, because it doesn't have independent access for a separate business to be located down there, does it?
Well, it does. There's, there's a separate stairway, but, you know, we just planned to use it as storage. I think we talked with the fire department, and they got into the point where it needed an elevator if we were going to use it, and, you know, and it just goes on and on, and, you know, that's way beyond our budget. So at this point, I think we're just going to consider it as storage, so.
So just to make everyone aware, that's an ancillary use. On the first floor, it seems like it's consistent with the B1 district. On the second, on the basement floor, there's really not much else that could be used for. But I don't want someone from the public coming in a year later and say, you know, this is, if you look at person, or the first floor and the basement combined, it's sixty-five percent storage use.
But according to our code, I mean, a retail establishment needs storage space for their goods.
Right.
Do we have a formula, a ratio, or on a square-footage basis?
No, not for that specifically, but...
Okay.
And we kind of talked about this at a recent meeting, I think at least at the board level, about, you know, it's kind of in the community development director's discretion when you're processing something to determine whether it's a primary use, what's a primary use and what's an ancillary use, and whether it's acceptable. We've had that discussion before with someone that sold furniture, but they also did some small woodwork, furniture woodworking in the back part of the store. And it was determined not to be a manufacturing use. That was ancillary to the primary use, which is retail sales. So just anytime you get a use like this, you have to kind of take a look at it, especially knowing from the public you're objecting, but just make sure you know there's a lot of storage going on when you consider the basement.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Pill, if you would.
Thank you. Are you looking at this as a lease or a purchase of the building?
Purchase.
As a purchase. A curiosity question, where does the word international in the company name come from? Do you operate globally or is there...
I think that was my mom's dream.
Was it? It's a neat thing.
Yeah.
I don't know if there was an interesting story behind it.
No, well, I think we were interested initially in going into a catalog business. And that's where the international came. But, you know, it kind of died on the vine, you might say. When the internet came along, it swooped us out faster than we could keep up with it, so.
What do you foresee your hours being?
Well, currently, we work from 10:00 AM till 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And then we're open on Sunday from 10:00 to 4:00 and 2:00 to 5:00 on Sunday. So we're actually open seven days a week.
Seven days a week. So you'll, will you carry something similar to that forward to this facility?
Oh, yeah. I think we'll try to keep those hours.
Great. I don't have any problem with this request. I think it's a good use of the space and I think it gives you a chance to grow. You've got a thirty-year track record in town and that's a good thing. So I wish you success and good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anton?
I agree. Your building needs a little bit of work and I hope you can get it and put the money into it. I was walking around it and you're right, there's some things need to be done there. But it looks like you understand it and you know what you got to do. And I know how to working with the fire department, you know, they would want the world if you're going to try and go under, have someone else underneath you in the basement. But yeah, I would say welcome to the community, but you've been here forever, so glad you're still here. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, because you have potentially three locations and this could become the major storage facility, that could be a problem if that were the case. With the Naperville store and if you retain the store at 345 North Cass, then that, but as long as the balance stays pretty much as it's been indicated in your, in your application, I'm all for it and I welcome you to this location.
I think as far as our 245, you know, we're leased up till next February. So there's going to be some overlap probably. So I, you know, I didn't think I could pull my lease up in February and get this thing done, so, so we've got, and it's kind of disruptive process. We moved the store already and, you know, just, it creates a mess. And so I'd rather have the transition very smooth and, you know, somebody comes to our old place, there's an arrow that says we're down the street, you know? So instead of somebody else there telling you, well, I don't know if they're in business or not, you know? You know?
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, so your intent is definitely to close the other store eventually?
Yes.
And make this new location your primary location?
Right, yeah.
In town? Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good, good pick for this building. I mean, you know, it's, it will have a larger space for your, your...
Right.
...display and your sales area. And, you know, I just hope you have more business.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. We've got to make more money. That's it. But, you know, it's sort of, you know, by having, owning the building, you sort of build your own equity in it. So that's, you know, we've bought those buildings like that time and time again over the years, you know? So now it's time...
Well, I hope the exterior, once you get finished, looks better than it is today.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest thing to conquer at this point, you know, because it is sort of wearing down, you know, and I have to, I think we're just going to try to restore it at this point and, you know, and get it repainted and the stucco fixed and touch that.
Well, I don't have any other questions or comments. Good luck.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, not necessarily comments, although my daughter danced for sixteen years, starting in, probably in kindergarten and then through 2006 in college. And having accompanied her to your current store for many of those times during those years, I could, the space, you were going to, you were going to rattle around like a pea in the Grand Canyon, it feels like.
Yes, yeah.
Because it was always very, very compact.
Yeah, well, we've always been a small store, so.
And I certainly welcome, this is not too far from my house right now, and I welcome you coming in and rejuvenating this property. And it's a great, it's a great place with traffic from Manning School right past you every day. Knowing how often my daughter went in there to buy this or that, I think it's a great move. And I'm glad you're staying in Westmont.
Commissioner Thomas?
I was surprised to see the address because we just recently had something come within the last month or two. And that, since that's no longer there, what a perfect opportunity for someone who's already in. If we aren't going to have a new tenant, how about someone to improve, prove their lot and that? And welcome, welcome you. I'm glad, glad you were able to do it and were able to take advantage of the opportunity. So that's all I have.
I would echo again all my fellow commissioners' comments that I'm very happy that you're deciding to stay in the, in the Village of Westmont. Thirty years in business, that speaks quite well for you.
Yeah.
When I visited your store today and saw how compact it was, that, as one of my other commissioners said, you're going to rattle around like you're a lot of elbow room.
Well, somehow I know I feel it will fill up quickly, but...
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good. I really like the idea of you moving closer to our restaurant district because hopefully then some of your customers might decide to visit our restaurants either before or after going to your stores. So where you're at now, you're a little bit further away, but here you're within walking distance. So that might even help our restaurant district. I'm very happy to see you do it.
Thanks.
I would just hope you change your color.
Yeah, well, that's one I've been trying to toss around.
That's bad.
I didn't think pink would be a good one, because it is dance, but...
Okay, since we have a request for a special use, could we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All operations will be conducted indoors and will result in no adverse light, noise, odors, or other adverse effects on the public or surrounding property. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. All operations will be conducted indoors and will not impair property values within the area. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Surrounding properties are fully developed and this proposed use will not impede any further development. Criteria number four, the adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property is already served by adequate utilities. Criteria number five, the adequate measures have been taken or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Ingress and egress will occur on Norfolk Street and that parking is located in the rear of the building. These locations will minimize traffic congestion in the public streets, particularly Cass Avenue. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. No variations or waivers are being sought in conjunction with this special use request. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number two. Sufficient off-street parking is provided for this use. The property is currently serviced by public sidewalks and has an entrance along Norfolk Avenue. The retail and office space is limited in size. Accordingly, this use will not cause appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings affect for a special use, as hereby adopted and approved. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under Planning and Zoning Item 12-009, a special use permit request to operate an office with associated retail and storage in the B1 Limited Business District.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Fleet? Commissioner Fleet, I've been away for a while.
I know, that's fine, man.
Seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval and staff can tell you when you'll be scheduled for Thursday evening committee at the hall.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, Item 12-010, Village of Westmont, regarding a zoning code text amendment as follows. A, amend Appendix A, Section 11-15 of the Westmont zoning code regarding exempt signage.
Thank you. This text amendment is before us this evening after some discussion that originated with some of the downtown business owners. There are three related amendments that we're going to be discussing in greater detail in the hopes of offering a little bit more flexibility for our business owners. I know that a lot of times communities get a bad rap for not working with their business community, but as we heard this evening earlier, we're among some developers and businesses' best favorite places to work with. So we'd like to maintain that. And in order to do that, the proposal is that we look at our exemption section of the sign ordinance and opening that up so that we have a, basically, if you do not, if you look at the exemption area of the signage code right now, the only types of window signage that are allowed are paper or paper-like materials. So we're requesting the opportunity to allow for open signs in all business districts, restaurant menu displays in the downtown business district, and sandwich board signs in the downtown business district as well. There's some proposed language that I'd like Jill to speak to, as well as some samples that are included in your packet.
The amended language for open signs would clarify the window sign section of the, of the sign code, and it would say, open signs of three square feet or less shall be exempt and are required to have a static display. So this would not allow illuminated open signs to flash or blink, and they would be exempt from the window sign requirements. The next language that is requested is letter P, restaurant menu displays shall not exceed four square feet and shall be enclosed in a glass or plexi type frame. One such sign shall be permitted per restaurant. This allows pedestrians walking up and down the street to look in, see if there's something they like. And the glass or plexi frame protects the menu from vandalism or from the weather elements. The following text amendment, the last one, is letter Q, sandwich board signs, which are also known as A-frame signs. You typically see these in front of restaurants or smaller retail shops that want to advertise their wares. Sandwich board signs, also known as A-frame signs, are permitted only within the B1 Limited Business District. No more than one sign per lot is permitted, and they must be located entirely or partially on the sidewalk in front of the business, allowing for at least five feet of sidewalk clearance, and shall not exceed eight square feet or exceed four feet in height. Signs shall be removed and stored indoors when the establishment is not open for business. Any signs encroaching on public right-of-way must comply with the village's indemnity policy. Sandwich board signs must be professionally made and maintained in good condition. Signs shall be of A-frame design and properly weighted so as not to create a wind-blown hazard. Signs shall not have any nails, tacks, wires, or sharp metal edges protruding therefrom. Sandwich board signs shall be, must be located on the ground and not be attached to any structure or person.
So currently, these three types of signs are not permitted at all. And technically, if we got a complaint, which has happened previously, we've had to enforce that complaint and ask for removal. So in order to try to find a middle ground, especially in the B1 district, which is pedestrian-oriented, you know, people are, they're walking down the street and they want to see what's immediately available to them, we're bringing these proposals forward so that there's no lack of clarity in enforcement action going, going forward, I suppose.
Okay.
Love it.
Well, let's start with questions from Commissioner Pill, if you would.
I read this over and this is probably overdue. I think all three of these are great ideas and I think this is business-friendly, it's downtown-friendly, and these are no-brainers. I'm on it. Great job writing it up.
Commissioner Anton?
He says everything. You never get a chance to say anything on your own, you know?
I'll call you first.
Okay. No, I agree. It's going to make it homey, nice, warm. It's just a great thing to do. I think it's, I think it's about time and, you know, we are becoming really business-friendly, aren't we?
Becoming.
Yeah, I'm just saying. The people aren't yelling at me when I'm downtown anymore. They're not kicking me out, so it's great. I think it's a great idea. I'm on board. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, sometimes you react to one particular instance and then you have knee jerk and you're not planning, you're reacting. And I see that you've done a good job here researching this with other communities and it's something that can stick and will continue to be a very good asset to the businesses, so I'm all for it.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I agree with everyone else. I think it's a great idea. And I've seen all of these types of signs used in other communities and you just kind of wondered why they weren't used here. Obviously, it's because our code didn't allow it. So I think it's time we change with the times and allow our businesses to prosper. That's it.
Commissioner Fleet?
On the, on the open signs, what we're shown here is a, most likely, a neon type sign. What about the use of LED type signs? And what's the definition of static? Is it like, I know we don't want it to change every thirty seconds or something, but what if the message changed every day?
Well, with an open sign, the message isn't really going to change.
Right, but...
But the code already and has for a long time prohibited flashing, stroboscopic effects, those types of things. So this is almost redundant to that point, but we do have a number of businesses that currently have the open signs that have them on some sort of flashy or attention-getting display that we want to, you know, let them know that we're willing to work with them but need to put them on notice so that they're held constant.
Commissioner Thomas?
At some point in the rest of this week, I wanted to use the word strobostropic.
That's what we were just remarking on, yeah. That's what the code actually says.
That was outstanding. I've been a fan of staff and their ability to work with businesses in this town. I've mentioned it many times with Fred and with Shannon. And you continue to do us proud. Thank you, and I agree with this. That's all I have.
Okay. Our attorney has a few words to say.
No comments on the open sign language itself. I do know that under window signs that are paper, they can't take up more than sixty percent of the total window area. Just per glance, seems like a lot. Like you can litter your window with sale, sale, you know, kind of like the cheap grocery store and stuff. You know, I know that's been in there for a long time. It's not really up for consideration tonight. Yes, Shannon?
Well, to that point, we are actually looking at that at the staff level, the percentage that you are allowed to cover. We've had some examples on the south end of town where we would like to discuss that... We've had some examples on the south end of town where we would like to discuss that at a further date, but we didn't want to mar the idea that we're trying to, you know, help and encourage businesses to do what they can within their means, so that's something that we would possibly be bringing up at another meeting.
Okay. With the, moving then to the restaurant menu displays, says shall not exceed four square feet and be enclosed in glass or plexiglass type frame. However, if they are printed on paper and just stuck in the window, then they wouldn't have to be in a plexiglass frame.
Right, true.
I wonder, do we need to state that? That says unless displayed as a window sign, comma, restaurant menu display shall not exceed four square feet and shall be enclosed. Because you're kind of envisioning something like stuck on the side of a building outside and has to be protected from the elements. If it's in the existing window, along with their other window signs, I guess they wouldn't have to enclose it in.
Right.
But if someone like Amber wouldn't do that, though, they'd put the sign, they'd put that out front.
It may not be needed, so.
I'd argue that it would be allowed by right now with the window sign code.
Yeah, okay. With the sandwich board signs, it says you have to allow for at least five feet of sidewalk clearance, and is that, that wouldn't be two feet on one side, three feet on the other?
No, a continuous expanse.
Five continuous feet. Can we add that word?
Mm-hmm.
And then it says after that, and shall not exceed eight square feet? That's the, is that per side?
That was one side, I believe.
Yeah.
Per side, side. Can we add that, then?
Mm-hmm.
How about attached to a person? Wouldn't that be fun, though?
Attached to a person?
It says right here, cannot be attached to a person. Can we amend that?
We had Liberty Tax come in and try and do that, and it was rejected.
I'm just kidding.
All right, and then it says, so it shall not exceed eight square feet or exceed four feet in height, which makes it seem like it could be one or the other. I think that or should be in hand.
Okay.
And it should not exceed.
Right. Mm-hmm. That's all I have.
Then would you omit exceed there, and four feet in height?
So not exceed eight square feet and four feet in height? Yeah. You can, you can do it either way, two negatives or those two positive.
A double negative.
Is a positive. All right?
Chairman Richards? Since we are adding open signs of three square, to go back to the window signs, my understanding is open signs of three square feet or less shall be exempt and are required to have a static display. Now, we're not delineating what kind of signs they could be, what, are they going to be paper, acceptable neon, is that acceptable?
Our code does not limit.
Is LED?
Right, the only limitation for window signs presently is paper or paper-like, which we've typically interpreted like vinyl to be allowable, so by considering these exempt, that would open it up to allow for the neon or LED styles as well.
All of those, okay, but then they would have to be static?
Correct.
Okay, now what, now there's an open sign on the Old Brown's Chicken right now. He's, he's a neon, but he's circled with flashing blue stars.
It shouldn't be flashing.
There should be a setting on the sign that will hold it steady.
Well, was that sign even legal in the first place?
Technically.
Is he going to be a legal non-conforming use and even keep it, or what?
Well, what we'll have to do is a little bit of reaching out to let people know that the regulation's now in place to make open signs legal, and here are the parameters under which you need to follow them in order for it to be considered exempt.
Okay. Again, what everybody else says, I think these are long overdue and well thought out. Anybody have anything further?
I did want to make one comment on the sandwich board signs. If it's eight feet per side, that's going to be awful, well, okay, that'd be four foot by two feet.
Two by four.
Eight square feet, two by, four by two, okay.
Two by four.
All right.
It's a dull still.
Four feet high. So the one sign that's in the picture has a little, little open sign on top of it. Would that be allowed? Or would that, you know, make it exceed?
It would just be counted as part of the whole sign.
Number four feet.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't exceed eight feet on a side. Okay, all right.
Okay, under Planning and Zoning Item 12-010, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, the amendment for Appendix A, Section 11-15 of the Westmont Zoning Code Regarding Exempt Signage as, help me here, John, as amended.
Set forth in the staff report?
As set forth in the staff report. I always knew I could call.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren, it's vote yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Any commissioners have any comments on any business?
Just want to say when that shoe store opens up, the Dan Shoe Store, in the grand opening, I will buy Commissioner Craig a pair of shoes.
Dancing shoes?
Yes, dancing shoes.
Shoes of not my choice.
Staff have anything?
Nothing further this evening.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
John wins.